We call this Jackson County Commission, August 26, 2019, to order. Roll call, Mr. Manning.
Mr. Rich, present. Mr. Venable.
Present.
Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Seuss, present. Chairman also present.
We have enough for four of them. I will have our prayer of Mr. Porter and our pledge.
God our Father, we're thankful for blessings that you give us every day individually and as a community. We live in a wonderful place that we're thankful for. We're thankful for this rain that has nourished the ground. We're thankful for each person here, their families. We're thankful for those that choose public service, commissioners, law enforcement officers, and those others that serve this community. We're thankful for them. We pray for them. Pray that you'll be with their families. Pray you'll continue to watch over us and guide us every day in Christ's name.
To the flag of the United States of America and the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice to try.
May we approve the agenda, August 26. You have a question?
Make a motion with approval.
All seven. Motion in second. All favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. We don't have any awards or presentations. We have two people tonight under public comments. First be Mr. Michael Bishop.
Yes.
You want to speak?
I'll wait till my turn. I saw that we were on the agenda after I got here.
Hey, Rockbilly.
Yes, we'll wait for them. Okay. All right. Mr. Rouse.
Yes, sir. I would like to know what is being done in District 1 on 93. Whether you're doing anything or not in the manner of getting to the road repaired.
You won't take any danger?
Yeah, I mean, we're waiting on FEMA still. I mean...
Waiting on acceptable for me. I want to see something happen on the road.
I understand.
My neighbor lady had to go to her neighbor today and had to take her in a van. Her sister took her. She wouldn't wait and call out. But that's our only road to our emergency services. We do need something done.
I understand that. I understand that. But until we get the money and the funds to do fix the roads, there's nothing... Our hands are tied at the moment. I mean, we just...
Who's got them tied?
Well, I mean, we don't have insurance on fixing the roads. I mean, insurance don't cover stuff like that. We don't have the money to... John?
I think what we went over in the meeting two weeks ago when we were out there, Mr. Campbell laid out our intended...
Yeah, and I'll comment on that too. Everybody that I talked to in that community, and they told me several of them thought I ordered it. I don't know why they wanted to tell me. I'm just one person in the whole community. They said they felt like that was just the forest that they know benefits or... They wanted to hear something going on through the road. They don't... They didn't want to see the damage. They knew it was what a staff... They needed to know what was being done to repair the road, get it recovered.
I think it was laid out as clear as we could. You know, we have a limited amount of money. There's projects, there's four of them. When we put those dollars into those projects, we have to have reimbursement before we can start the second, the third, and the fourth project. So if I'm wrong, Mr. Campbell can correct me, but County Route 17 is not a FEMA project with the reimbursement that we're going through for them.
It'll be an emergency relief project with federal holiday administration.
Those dollars come back faster than FEMA. So we have the money to start and work on one project. So we'll have to start on 17 first because we'll get those dollars back faster. That's where we're at. We have a limited amount of money, and we have enough money to start one of those four projects. Am I incorrect in the way I'm explaining that?
I don't know why Jackson County is as big as it is and we don't have the money to repair the roads. When FEMA's gonna pay 80% of it, why can't you file 80% right now and get it started?
Mr. Campbell, you want to explain the process and where we're at?
Sure. So as we explained in the community meeting, which you were there, I believe...
Yes, I was.
We talked about how we prioritize the projects in one. And so as Mr. Venable alluded to, the ER project wants to stay ahead of those funds. We can readily anticipate when contractors put to work receiving those dollars back sooner rather than later, usually within a month or two. FEMA can be a different animal. And what I mean by that is, once we get to actual shovel ready and we can go to work, that means the problem's been identified, geotechnical work's been satisfied, and we're ready to go to work. When that contractor goes to work and starts his process, there's a major delay, as we have experienced in FEMA projects in the past, as recent as 2015. There is a major delay in when we see those dollars back. So we're not talking about a minor slide like we had in 2015 on County Route 33, or a bridge washing out that was relatively minor like we had on 290 in 2015. We're talking about multimillion dollar projects. So to cash flow multimillion dollar projects and to be able to pay a contractor, because once we put a contractor to work, they want to be paid monthly. They have to function monthly. They have bills monthly, people monthly. They want to be paid monthly. So we have to be able to pay them to keep them working. If we don't have the cash flow coming in for this size of an expenditure, then we can't hire a contractor and put them to work. So in order to make the leap from ER project to FEMA project, there's FEMA work that has been done, that we talked about in the community meeting, the washouts, the road repairs, the culler repairs, things of that nature, that has been submitted to FEMA. It's been turned in. It's been requested for our money, and we're in waiting for those dollars. Now, once those dollars come in and once we start 17 and we have a positive cash flow on some of this work we're doing, then I believe this body would be comfortable with taking on the next project. But it's not something simple as some small projects we can run out and do and wait on our money to come back. We're talking about $6 million worth of damage to the county, and that was the purpose, if you recall, in showing all the different slides in the community meeting.
Yeah, but that... Yeah, I understand that, but I don't know why you can't contact FEMA and get something directed to it. Now, I mean, they're a federal funded thing. We're entitled to it. It was a disaster, a God act, you know, an act of God done it. And I believe we can speed it up some way if we would put our shoulder to the wheel and do it like it should be done. You guys are elected officials that represent us, the community that I'm in there. We need our road access. And my neighbor said Bill Bynum has to go around four times a day. He goes up to Mountain Carriage, his kids, to the Mountain View Church of God daycare, comes back down home, then goes back that evening, and back... And it's a shortcut right there. And it's an inconvenience for us. Plus, all of our emergency vehicles come... They have to go extra. It takes longer to get there. And I know you figured six miles, 60 minutes, six minutes, but that's not an accurate count. You've done it through Google, but Google didn't go from a stop sign all the way around to where 93 gets on 73. They went to the state line from Bryant School. You measure it again, put your calculator on it, and it'll give you the mileage, and it's tremendous amount of money for our community down there in that little village spot. Oh, no. We're ready to run it. But now, we need something done. I would like y'all to try harder. I wouldn't put nobody out, but it's putting us out terribly.
I'll put a call in to Steve Livingston, Tommy Haynes, Richie Thornton, and even Uncle Tom Brooks in the morning and see what they can do.
I appreciate that.
I'll wait and see what...
I have thought of him, but Brooks says he's intact. You know, I've called him. I've even called the governor's office, and they said you guys could take care of that. That's what they told me on the phone. Now, I'm not...
I'll make some phone calls in the morning.
I want to address a little bit. I'll let the rest of them speak. Like I said, the meeting you had, you felt like you walked away with nothing. I'll add that because you had a home out there that was destroyed because of...
Yeah.
...or it was getting two of them.
Yeah.
A few of them, I talked with some legislative group. There is money out there for emergency situations with the governor.
Yeah.
And I got a phone call yesterday from one of them. A letter was sent, and he said, hopefully it gets response this week. He said, can't say for sure, but he said, I've also talked with another one that's involved the governor, and he said, seems like the things will speed up a little bit. I said, well, you know, we're in a situation where it wasn't a home, it could have been a person, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And they said that same thing. They said, you know, we've seen the sun shine, but we haven't seen no ground broke.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at. We'd like to see something done.
I would like to have it.
But if they can get on board and push the governor, and you know, I feel like after that phone call back yesterday, he said, you know, I think we'll get a little response. He said, I can't go out and speculate on things, but he said, this guy works with her. He said, he's gonna try to push the issues. So I'm hoping just like the rest of these commissioners are, that we can, so it can take place.
Yeah. Well, Brooks told me he's packed. He didn't talk with us, but y'all had to handle it, and that's why I'm here today. And I want to know what's going on and what can be done to expedite a little bit.
Unless there's some more cash comes into Jackson County through whatever avenue, we're doing all we can do, I promise you. You know, we make the phone calls we can make. We contacted the people that we need to contact. You know, the normal procedures for FEMA, as Mr. Campbell said, is not speedy in any way. We, what, two months ago, we just got our final check from some of the 2015 damage. So, you know, we've got a certain amount of cash, and that's all we have. And that's not anything that's a surprise because we've been talking about it from when I got elected first in 2012. I think we've talked about it ever since then, and we've laid out a lot of what-if scenarios. And this storm, this event, was a what-if scenario.
Yeah.
We have a road system that's already in regression. This $6 million worth of damage and the time and resources that we're gonna have to spend on is gonna put our road system even in further regression. So we have a problem, and I hate that we have an inconvenience.
Are you doing anything that can help?
We have asked for several things to be done, but we don't have the authority to do any of that.
Well, is there somewhere I can go and ask for it?
The state and our state legislators has to, you know, they can do redistribution of funds that's already collected. They can put on new taxes, sales tax, lodging tax, whatever. We don't have the authority to do any of that. So that's where we're at. It can be put to a vote. It can be done by them, but we don't have that authority. We're elected to be administrators of what dollars we have. We try to be the best stewards that we can of those dollars, and we're doing all we can do with what we got to do with.
You know who to go to when you need more?
Like I said, we have made requests. Multiple, we've sent resolutions, making requests for changes, and that's out of our hands.
Well, whose hands is it in?
The legislators. State delegation.
Okay. Well, I'll find out every one of them and talk to them.
And I appreciate it.
I'm interested in getting this done for the community because my wife's an end lit, and I need them emergency services as quick as I can get them. I hadn't called them but one time, but they was, you know, it's not done good. But my neighbor lady fell in her house this morning, and her sister lives right close to her, and she took her there, linger in her own van. But we need that road. It's a necessity that we get what we can started on it. We can't just sit back and, you know, do nothing.
See, everybody thinks that the sales tax, we get the sales tax. We don't get no sales tax.
Yeah. But I'm asking you guys to do everything you can. Thank you for that.
All the other approaches, I would tell you, and I don't know, but sometimes, you know, the old saying is, if I was a squeaky wheel against the grease...
Yeah.
Some of your community members might get you a van load and go to Montgomery, set up a meeting.
I've been to the whole church that I go to. Oh, no. That church. I gave up one of them, the governor's phone number. I had got it for them, and they said they would call this week.
I'm hoping after that phone call yesterday, and if they house up a letter and talk with them, maybe there's gonna be some emergency fund. It would be a great help for us, not all of y'all, but for us too.
Yeah. And I thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the work session. First, having for discussion would be Johnson Controls. Mr. Cory Palmer.
All right. First of all, I'd say thank you for allowing me a chance to come in and discuss a few things with you. We... I've got a few slides here that I'm gonna go through as I talk. First slide here is just Johnson Controls partnering with the county commission to try to address some of the issues that you've got going on here in the courthouse with some of the HVAC equipment that you have. Introduction, myself. My name is Cory Palmer. I've been with Johnson Controls for about 18 years. This is my supervisor, Michael Copeland. He's been with Johnson for 10 years now. Briefly, what we're gonna discuss today is, we're gonna go through a little bit of our safety program, tell you a little bit about Johnson Controls, give you like an overview of what we've talked about, what we've discussed, what we've looked at, look at your current equipment and the needs there. Just go quickly over like the NCPA cooperative program, financing, and then if anybody's got any questions at the end, we'll do our best to answer them, and if we can't answer them, we'll try to get the answers back to you. First of all, Johnson Controls, we take a lot of pride in our safety record. We are a large company. The national average on the TR hour is about 5.3. Johnson Controls, we're at about under 1%, so we're at .97. On lost time injuries, you know, you can see there, they're about 1.7 across the board. We're at .06. That's pretty incredible as far as safety record. We're pretty proud of that. We try to take care of our guys and make sure everybody's doing everything safe. We don't want anybody getting hurt, want everybody going home with their families. We don't want any lost time at all. It's just a big hindrance. All right. Johnson Controls, who are we? Johnson Controls was founded by Warren Johnson. He invented the first electric room thermostat in 1885. Fortune 100 Corporation. One of the things that I'm very proud of is we've been named as one of the world's most ethical companies for the last seven years. Now, this is a few years old, that slide is, but I mean, seven years in a row, we were named as one of the most ethical companies. We are number five in the top 500 of the best corporate citizens. So we've got three divisions. We basically want me and Michael work in is what they call the building efficiencies. We have the automotive and the power solutions business. We also merged with Taco, Simplex, Grinnell, so now we have a fire and security division as well. So we've turned it into a one-stop shop, a turnkey process. We can take care of all your needs as far as security, fire, HVAC, lighting. We have branches in all major metro areas in the U.S., as well as many, many other countries. We have about 7,600 people, process, best safety record, commitment to customer satisfaction, culture, and continuous improvement. We have about 20,000 maintenance contracts, about 515,000 annual service requests. We do turnkey on controls, mechanical services. We have green building service and energy retrofits that we do. All right. As far as your local service team, what kind of would serve our area? We have a local Huntsville branch or service team, and out of that local service team, we have about, we have over 50 direct employees. We have 25 field technicians, many chiller tanks, controls tanks, HVAC, engineers, designers, pipe fitters, welders. We have all that on staff that readily available if we need anything. And that's one of the great things about Johnson Controls is we can partner and help people with most any need that they have as far as building efficiency goes. All right. We do a lot of planned service agreements with a lot of facilities. We do preventative maintenance, basically, it's kind of laid out there. It's pretty simple. You want to do maintenance on your equipment so that you can be proactive instead of reactive. We want to try to head off any kind of problems that you have before you have them, to keep you from having downtime, to keep you from having equipment failure. And it also prolongs the life of your equipment with good preventive maintenance. We do a lot of mechanical retrofits, a lot of controls retrofits, security, fire, lighting, et cetera. All right. Building efficiency overview. We do a lot of things with customers with the sustainability of the facilities, green building effect, lease rates, occupancy. We look at the acquired designs we plan, do the designs, constructions, and operate and maintain. So we can do it all. We can help you with any of your needs. We can help you design it, go all the way through the process, and then after it's installed, maintain it as well. All right. So now, we're kind of to what kind of guidance here today. Your current equipment. So we kind of were asked to come in. We was having some issues with the air water system, your cooling towers. You've got some air handlers in the basement that was, we was having some issues with. So we came in and looked at a few things and done some minor repairs. And while we were here, we kind of did an evaluation of the equipment and what we were looking at. Right here, this is your existing train chiller. It's a screw chiller. It's 125 ton. There's the compressors on the back. Has two screw compressors. If any of y'all have been in the basement, you've heard it, I'm sure, as you walk by the door. It's pretty loud. One of the compressors has got some internal problems. It's very loud when it runs. The other one's running right now, but this right here is the heart and soul of your cooling in this entire courthouse as far as your first and second floor. This is what's going, and parts of the third floor. But this goes out, and the courthouse gets hot very fast, and it don't take long. And it's, this is, I think it's right around 20 years old. It's to the end of its life cycle. It is, to sit back and do nothing on a piece of equipment like this is just asking for some major failures. All right. This is air handler number three. I think this is actually the air handler that goes up to the second floor. It goes, it's a, it's got a system where it goes into the commission's office, all those offices up there with the zone controls. All that's been disconnected, discontinued. None of the actuators are operational. The coils are leaking, and the air handler is in really, really bad shape. And I just took a picture up to kind of see where he is at. This is your first floor air handler. This is the big one as you first walk into the basement. And if you notice right now at the bottom, that, those little yellow, this there, that's kind of dried water. The entire floor of that air handler has disintegrated. It's not leaking into the drain, through a drain line into the drain. It's actually deteriorated to the point that it's just coming out the bottom of it. So that creates multiple, multiple problems in a building like this. First of all, you've got constant water in the basement. Second of all, you're losing efficiency because all those leaks, you're losing air too. So you're losing a lot of air, you're losing a lot of efficiency. And those air handlers that I just showed you, they're closing in on about 40 hours, I'm pretty sure. So we did a quick calculation. This is, this is just a quick overview. So what I did is I asked our lady that does energy analysis to give me, if we took out that chiller that you've got and put in a brand-new chiller, what kind of energy cost would we be looking at? What kind of energy savings cost would we be looking at? She ran the calculations, and this is not, this is not like accurate compared to what you've got. What this is, is comparing apples to apples, and she just used the, I'll have to, may have given a glance at this. She just used a .12 cent, 12 cents on kilowatt. I don't know what y'all's rates are, but she used the 12 cents per kilowatt, and that might be y'all's rate because I sent her a bunch of stuff. But compared to running it like it's supposed to be ran through the summertime and not the winter months, so you're looking at about a $14,000 a year savings just changing out the chiller. The air handlers, you're looking at, if we changed out the air handlers, you're also looking at another about 40%, 30 to 40% savings on the air handlers' efficiency because we're going from just a regular mechanical starter to a drive, which will save you a whole lot of money and efficiency with the air handlers. Now, the other part of this process is your cooling tower. The cooling tower is deteriorating to the point that you can, when I went up and physically looked at it, I actually stuck and was able to stick my finger through the wall of the cooling tower. So it's got to be, something's gotta be done with that immediately, or it's just going to come apart. It's already leaking out. It's leaking onto the ground. It's coming out from underneath it. Eventually, the floor is going to just go, and the water's gonna come out. So not only are you losing energy cost because there's no drive or anything on the cooling tower, you're also spending a lot of money on water running out to the parking lot during the summertime. Because it's in the back of the cooling tower, so obviously, it's going to evaporate. It's got to fill back up, and it's just constantly just flowing. So you're just constantly putting water into it as it leaks out. So not only is it evaporating, but now it's pouring out onto the ground. So I came in and we did an evaluation on that and looked at that, and then we've come up with some solutions to try to help out, to solve the problems that you have. And Johnson Controls has put together what we feel is the best solution to get this back operating like it's supposed to, not only just to get you equipment in here that you've got to have, but also to get you a control system in here so you can better control it. You've got better control of your equipment. You can see what it's doing. And the control system itself helps save money and energy by turning units on and off when they're supposed to go on and off versus somebody just going in there and flipping a switch and, oh, it's getting hot, let's turn it back on. So we've come up with some solutions that we feel like will be the best to help the courthouse save money. Of course, you know, it takes a little money to save money, but it's gonna help by saving a lot of money in the process. Now, all right. The next thing is that I want to talk about is the NCPA cooperative program. This is, this program is a cooperative program that you're a part of, you are a member of, and I'm a member of, Johnson Controls. It's a program to where it helps the procurement process. It helps to, that you, you already know what your rates and stuff is gonna be. You don't have to guess. There's no negotiating. They set the rates, what is fair, so you get a honest price with a lot less hassle. So who are we? The NCPA is National Cooperative, is leading national government purchasing cooperative working to reduce the cost of goods and services by leveraging the purchasing power of the public agencies in all 50 states. So it's a way that we can, and I'm kind of moving through these kind of fast because I'm, I don't... I don't want to, I don't want to take up more of your time than necessary. But it's the, I've got a lot of information on this that we can, I can pass out or get to you if you need it. It's basically just telling what you can, you know, what the cooperatives are good for, who can use them. Uh, so who can use the cooperative programs right here? Uh, schools, cities, counties, local government, healthcare, churches, nonprofit. And it, if you're a member and someone, and another contractor's a member, it, it's, it helps out a lot, speeds up the process to keep from going through procurement, you know, you know what prices you're getting and what kind of, um, you know that you're getting the best price for the services. All right, there's value, no cost to you, that don't cost you anything, you get the best pricing available, uh, optional contracts, a limit makes the needs for agencies to solicit on their own, uh, ability to realize the ag- aggregated volume purchasing. Um, so let's, all right, another option to look at is, is financing through Johnson Controls. Uh, you can, um, you know, we offer financing if that's something that you are interested in, uh, we can talk about it. Uh, Johnson Controls has the, a really good financing program. Uh, we can do as little as twenty-five thousand dollars all the way up to a hundred million dollars. Um, so we've, we've done a lot of business for the city of Hoover, uh, city of Gardendale. We've used these cooperative programs, they're very happy with them. Uh, it makes the process so much faster, and, um, they've been very pleased. We're very customer friendly with the financing, sales friendly, and JCI friendly. Um, customers can finance directly with JCI for minimum twenty-five to maximum million. You can finance the, just the equipment, or you can finance the entire project, it's, it's completely up to you. Or you can get your own financing. It's a zero down payment, deferred payment, uh, during construction, easy buyout if you get ready. Um, six fifty to eight percent, and that could, that could, that could vary depending on your credit. I mean, it could be a little bit lower, a little bit higher. Um, all right, that's about all I've got, I've got a, I do have, um, time for questions if anybody's got any. Um, but what we are proposing as a, as a solution to the issue is to change out the chiller in the basement, the cooling tower on the roof, number three air handler, the smaller one, number one air handler, the larger one, and a control system that will actually control, that will actually tie into all the new equipment, plus the boiler, and retrofitting twenty-eight, retrofitting twenty VAV boxes and replacing six VAV boxes for a total, or replacing eight for a total of twenty-eight VAV boxes. Um, so that you have control and can, and can actually know what your building's doing. And, um, also, we've, we've also into, into that incorporated a one-year service program that we can, you know, after it's done, we come in and service your equipment, not just your new equipment, but all your equipment, so that we can actually try to be proactive in what we're doing and not just reactive when it, when it breaks, calling somebody, because that's, that's just costing you more and more money. Maintenance will, will save you a lot of money in the long run.
Do you have a spreadsheet that has this broken down? The spreadsheet that has this broken down?
No, I've done my thing. Scope of work up here.
I do have a spreadsheet and a summary, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, a scope of work and a summary of scope of work.
You mentioned one of the three, what's that going to leave us, still the old products?
All right, so the only thing that leaves you as far as old is a small, very small unit in the basement that serves toward the EPA offices back there. It's a really small unit, it's, it's old, it's the same age, but it's actually in fairly good shape. Uh, to be that old because it's so small, it don't have the steam coils and all that kind of stuff, and it's just straight cooling. Um, then the, the rest of what you got up on the third floor in the attic was actually retrofitted and, and done back in, I'm going to say two thousand and one, maybe, or two, somewhere along in there, and they-
What about that controls on here?
Yes, tho- those carrier, the carrier units in the attic and stuff, was that two thousand and one or? Yeah, I believe it was-
I think so.
Oh, it was either one or two. They done a big project, um, I'm pretty sure it was with Smith Services, I think. Um, put a VVT system in up there, and those air handlers up there, they're not near as old as these. I mean, they've still got some life left in them. Um, but they're what now, fifteen, sixteen years old?
Fifteen years old.
Yeah, so these are, these are, these, the reason we address these so much is because these are the ones that are fixed and too, I mean, they're, they're, they're gone. They're, they're, they outlived their lifespan, um, and they're not going to continue on the way. This is something that's got to be done in some form or fashion, and before next summer, you are going to face a lot of problems in the ground, that's the only way to know. I mean, this is, this is, it's critical at this point. When you got, when you got water just running down in the floor of the basement, and me and Michael, we went down there this afternoon before the meeting, just, I wanted to show him the air handlers and, and what we was, you know, proposing. And, uh, i- it's, it's even worse now than when I looked at it before, you know, three months ago. It's just deteriorating, it's just rusting out, and then the more water, the more rust, so. Uh, this, this right here, from what we can tell, um, this is what, this is what we have to have. Now there, I mean, we can do as much as you want, but this is just what you have to have that's going to keep you from having to get in real bad trouble.
To clarify, I asked him for a little space of equipment because I knew that, uh, we wouldn't have the money to do everything I would like to in the courthouse and after evaluating that equipment, the equipment's in pretty good shape, uh, the control system up there, so, uh, the equipment that he talked about, well, it's forty-plus years old, uh, the air handlers, they're leaking terribly.
This scope of work and this equipment, uh, would it need to all be done in one package? Because the new wouldn't be compatible with the older stuff, or could we break this out into two projects instead of one large project?
Um, we could break it out into two if we needed to. Um, it's, it's not imperative that we do it at the same time, other than labor cost, okay? Uh, you've got the guys in here working, uh, because, I mean, it's, it's going to be a big demo job in that basement to get, to get that chiller out and another chiller rolled in. That air handler is, you know, it, it's as long as from me to that wall, it is wide as from here to that wall, I mean, it's huge. So it's a pretty good demo project that's going to have to be done, so when you get in there and start doing a demo and stuff, you would save some time and money a little bit, uh, doing it all together. It don't have to be, if, if it's something to where you just couldn't do it, um, you know, you could, you could make it happen. It would, it would, you'd have to adjust for things like that, but.
Mr. Banning, have you seen this number? Uh, we don't have that in our capital approval, but the phone number one sixteen would cover that as well as asking.
Right.
Uh, now, what we will have put in in twenty twenty would cover it, but it would be with the leak the phone.
Right.
I know Mr. Allison probably said that, I was thinking how they talk about doing that. And, and the courthouse, when we don't have money to fix, kind of go ninety-three, but it's a separate pool of money, it is, it is earmarked for capital improvement. We can't spend these dollars on roadworks, so I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody was clear on that.
Way to explain that, because being in the public, if you don't know that, it's, it's a-
And that's, that's one of the great, you know, that's one of the good things about, you know, Johnson Controls and Johnson Controls financing and things like that. If it's something that you, you think in the next couple of years you could do, and, and, you know, the financing, you can pay it off at any time, so if it's something that, that's got to happen now, and you had to finance it for a year or two years, you could pay it off next year or the year after that, uh, however you want to do it. And what, you know, and, and we can, we can get as much in depth of the, I, I kind of touched the surface of it because I wasn't sure really what direction that y'all were thinking. But there are a lot of options, and, and we're here to help you, you know, to get you all the information you need to make the best decision you can, I mean, we're, we're, we want to help you do whatever we can do. Not just in the design of the mechanical systems, but I mean, you know, we take to find the money and get the project done as well, because it's, it's critical that we get it done at this point.
We appreciate you coming, and I'd like to say a big thank you to our maintenance department, because they have done a wonderful job in keeping this stuff patched together and since I've been here that, um, you know, he's finding equipment that they no longer make and everything else, eBay and anywhere you can find it to keep things going, and, and they're doing a great job.
We worked there back in June, and we, we've seen exactly what we're facing. Although it's, it's some bad things coming down the pipe, or something, what you can explain?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, uh, I'll get the copy of the scope, and you can get it out to everybody, and then we can take a look at it. Makes me leasing the land, the sportsman landing to the city of Scottsboro. Mr. Banning?
Yeah, I had, had not really opposition to this, but I had some questions on it. Uh, several years ago, we had looked at possibly bringing in some cabins, and TVA said if they didn't do that, couldn't build any permanent structures, but if you could do lodging, you know, like RVs or whatever. Uh, I had talked to the mayor and one of the city council members, and they said they didn't mind if we put in the lease agreement, if there was any lodging or, or, um, any profitable gent benefit taken out there that the county would, uh, have a part in that, or that the county would have to agree to that and come up with some profit sharing, give the fee deal, and the county did it on their own. So as long as that lease takes that, I don't have a problem with, uh, with the city leasing the, the parking lot and both lots because those are the collectors and grant holders to fix the place up and, and make it more usable for the public.
How, how would you say?
Just, I would just like that word in the, in the contract, if the county wanted to come up with something that had that word in it and get it back to us, uh, then we can make a motion on it or to-
So you want to stay on the X four session?
That would be in, in, in a western, in a huge hurry, yeah.
Fairway's good with, well, Mr. Ford, if you can get that for us. Uh, then next week is a work session, or we can, you want to get that all in, you can.
Are we going to put any kind of stipulations for the, the lease, and for how long, or anything, or is it just? I mean, I'm, I'm likely available, I mean, I'm barring, going ahead and getting money. Let them know that if we need to put any kind of stipulations on, if we did, look at something different, do that.
We're just looking to see what TVA grants, that we're going to be getting. But that TVA may have stipulations after the lease, if they have, I'll, I'll check it out, they have any questions, uh, by this one session. I don't, I don't think it will matter if, as long as we get the bill to be, uh-
As long as we got access, like you just stated there, and I'm happy.
Number three, the temporary driver for council agent.
Uh, we, we're still short, um, a driver who's out on medical leave, and, uh, we're coming up on the season where we need to be pulling, uh, one of our subs back into the office to do, uh, her other job that, that, um, she's on the work store, and, uh, which is a shift, uh, helping with the Medicare Medicaid type, um, questions that people have in their department. So, um, we did have a driver to, um, quit recently, and, um, it would be, it would be very helpful if we could hire her back as a temporary person. And that, that means that, you know, somebody needs to be on vacation, needs to be out several days in a row, that, um, that we could have her or have a temporary driver, whoever it is, um, could work like full weights at a time. Our subs are limited on the hours that they can work during the month, and we have to really keep, we basically, got one lady that is helping us with that, other than the one that's in house, and, uh, she, um, we, we can only let her work so many hours a month, and that doesn't take care of vacations and, um, um, any other holidays that are coming up, a lot of people take vacations around holidays. But we just don't have enough, um, drivers on the road at any one time. And we thought this might be a good temporary fix, it's a six-month thing, and so that, and hopefully get us through, uh, the lady that's on medical leave, get us through what was going to happen with her, and, um, then, then we can go forward in the future with, with the information we have at that time.
Now, I'm assuming we're not talking about any type of budget increase, you take this drivers and a person that's sickly to pay this temporary? As long as there's no budget increase, I, I wouldn't make a move.
Uh, it's, it wouldn't be a budget increase because of, um, well, because of the lady that, that is on the sick leave. Uh, right now, she's, um, we do have her set up with, in the sick leave to take care of her through the end of September, but then it'll be, I think, late, but she'll be going on after that, so, um, that would be-
So you, you lost two, there've been actually, or down two drivers?
Yes.
So basically what you list, of course, one temporary, they, they had one driver that left, and they got one that's out sick, so if you want to put on this temporary for the one that's sick, I'm talking about replacing the ones that's left, yeah.
We might actually see some budget reduction overall on driver labor. Did we not at one time contract with, uh, an outside source to furnish, uh, drivers?
Not drivers, that was temporary employees for that, uh, for Medicaid waiver program that has been-
I just can remember that we-
Right.
We couldn't keep people, and we continued hiring.
No, that, that was not drivers, that was, um, the other program, and, uh, it takes quite a bit of, um, training for the drivers, and, uh, you know, we have to go through, we have to go through several processes to hire a driver, even a, you know, even a temporary one. So, uh, I feel like it would be better to be able to have someone that could be in there forty hours a week if we had to have them, and, um, to just get us through these next few months to find out what we're going to have to do.
How many subs do we have now?
We have one sub, we have a, and we have a, a person that works in our office that, um, she also does subbing. We had increased her hours, and she's working through that, through that, um, transportation program. And, uh, she does subbing, and also our coordinator has been driving many, many hours for about the past, oh, it's been about two months now or over, that, um, he's having to, he's having to drive, and the other lady's having to drive because we can't get a regular schedule, but, and, um, and it, it puts a strain on all of the other things that we have to, that they have to do in their jobs.
I think I mentioned to you back earlier, I don't remember for sure, a guy that was looking first, but part-time, you know, he retired, and I set up a Larry, Larry gave him, he said, uh, well, he still be available if he needed a, a name or something. He's a gentleman, he, he all the parts and things, and he just, I mentioned that to me a few months ago, and I thought I'd set something to you, might be something to work with.
Okay, so, so that means that you're for this, so we will be here.
So is everybody's okay with that on, uh, being following our work session?
Thank you.